All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a regular city commission meeting on Thursday, April 16th at 7:00 PM. We have Commissioner Lovett's gonna do the prayer. So I'd ask you everyone to rise for the prayer, and then we're gonna go right to the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for this opportunity to come together. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting, and ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this evening. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Lovett. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Argus.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
President.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Bobbitt.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Yeah.
Acting City Manager Tillery.
Here.
Moving on to Communications, we have a completion certificate for Mr. Hubcek. Congratulations on that training. And something from Fire Network. I believe they're canceling their permit.
Yes.
And giving us 500 bucks.
Yes.
Off his chair.
Make a motion to accept Communication, place on file.
Support.
Motion support. Is there any discussion?
We should have set the high under two.
Yeah. We've probably earned it somehow, I'm sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto public comment. You're welcome to come up to the podium and address the Commission. Please state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Raymond?
Ray Squires, 211 Michigan. I know you're considering raising taxes in the city of Marine City. I would like to remind you that, though, according to the latest census, United States Census, we have living in Marine City, over 30 percent of our population is over 65, and most living on a fixed income. We also have, according to the census, 15 percent of our population is living below the poverty level. Bear in mind, with that high of a vulnerable population, you need to rethink perhaps putting more burdens on people that already have more than their fair share of hardships to deal with. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the, excuse me, the agenda as presented.
Support.
The motion is support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda has been approved. Moving on to the approval of minutes of the regular city commission meeting from April 2nd.
Motion to approve the minutes from the city commission regular meeting, April 2nd, 2015, as presented.
Second to motion.
Motion support. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7B, which is the city commission budget workshop from April 8th, the minutes from that meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for city commission budget workshop of April 8th, 2015.
Support.
Motion is support. Any discussion on those minutes? Commissioner Hendrick?
Just a quickie, there's one little typo in the first paragraph there. Says mileage instead of millage.
I get that one wrong all the time.
Yeah.
The spell check's no help with that one.
No.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. We have consent agenda, item 8A, which is departmental activity reports. Item 8B, which is the fire authority run and agenda packet. Item 8C, which is a special event for the Marine City Garden Club plant sale.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda and place on file.
Support.
Motion is support. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Item 9A, Marine City Fire Authority Resolution, would be the adoption or the introduction?
Adoption.
Adoption.
I think we had one at the last minute.
It need not be introduced.
It does not have to be introduced? All right. So I guess since I requested this, this is, we talked about this last week, all this does is give us the opportunity to review it each year instead of an automatic approval. Is there any other discussion on this? Right. And then we'll go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Make a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
I would move to adopt Resolution 007, 2015, in regards to the fire authority resolution.
Motion is support. Now is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Onto item 9B, which is ordinance for Semco Energy Gas Company. So would be the adoption of that.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 02-2015, Semco Energy Gas Company.
Support.
Motion is support. Is there any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been approved. Onto Marine City Sidewalk Inspection Program. We had now the full program, the draft of the program that was originally put together by Mr. Gaber. So I believe we all have copies of that now. And we're looking for any discussion on that program. We have no discussion on that.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Avery.
In the packet, it is noted as Attachment 3B. It's a sample, which was taken from something, we have no problem with that. Down there, it has a type T, city responsible to replace. I don't see any other reference to that in our material. And yet, we know there has to be things that would be covered without that.
So I suppose you would like to see a definition for type T somewhere?
Yes.
I'd agree with that. Commissioner Lovett?
Also, and I'm sure that would be part of any redoing, but on page four, there certainly we need to work on dates, et cetera. Those dates start March 1st to 31st.
Yeah, the timeline is definitely something that passes by. If this was gonna be something that we were gonna do this year, we would have to adjust all those dates. I had a conversation with Mr. Tillery on this, and I suggested that maybe these dates are fine if we just change the year on, and that would give us the rest of this year to get our ducks in a row on this program. I mean, that was my one suggestion on the timeline, thinking that we've got quite enough going on for the residents this year as it is.
I'd agree, and I think it's time to cover a lot of these gray areas that we're having a hard time addressing in good detail.
Well, we've got, you know, the whole thing about finding a contractor, you know, getting the inspections going, getting notifications going, and there's an awful lot of logistics to all that.
And the first time of any program is the most tedious and difficult to do.
Right. So, I mean, if we were to adopt this program, that would be my suggestion, that we adopt it with the intent of making it ready for next year. Commissioner Avery?
I still have the concern that there is nothing in here discussing trees on the public parkway that are big enough and lift up the sidewalks.
But that doesn't really, you know, that's saying.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that was in there.
I did say that, but.
Oh, on the brochure.
Brochure, it says.
I guess what I'm saying is, I didn't see anything that I liked.
No.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's a good one.
No, type T is probably gonna be, you know, like a street, like the ends, you know, the sidewalks, the actual things that city is responsible for. Mr. Downey, what's your feeling on that?
I'll have to look into that, Your Honor. I don't know. Certainly, there are gonna be aspects of the sidewalk that are gonna be squarely in the city. It may just be because of the nature of the location, could be the, you know, where it's located, the right-of-way versus the private property owner. But I agree with Commissioner Avery that that ought to be fleshed out.
Well, maybe the intent of that is when we come up with a map or something, that the Ts identify the city responsibility somewhere, I don't know. And you also had opinion on damage from trees, I believe, in an earlier opinion.
Yes. To Commissioner Avery's point about whether we want to spell that out or not, the state is gonna impose a burden on the city to manage that problem if it does arise. But we also have an ordinance here in the city that allows us to seek recompense from the property owner, because they too have the simultaneous burden of maintaining that as well. So, you know, perhaps we could reference that in our, in the program, we could reference the ordinance that we have in the state statute as well.
They seem to be, are those in conflict with each other at all?
No, they're not. It's just a duty that's imposed statutorily by the state on each city as to maintain its sidewalks, but there is also a provision in the Home Rule City Act under which Marine City is created that allows it to put that burden on adjacent property owners, whether the sidewalk is on their property or whether they're merely abutting that property.
Commissioner Avery?
Okay, just as a purely hypothetical question, of course, if a homeowner in, trying to remedy this situation where a large tree has caused the sidewalk to come up, and he understands that the sidewalk has to be replaced, and in this remedy, the tree is injured, or heaven forbid, there would be herbicide, would the homeowner be responsible for the tree? Since it's on city property.
Yeah, we're only talking about the city side.
The city has always cut everything. If something goes between there, they've cut it down.
That would be the city's responsibility, Commissioner.
Okay, if it just happened to die during the operation, okay?
Well, thanks for putting that out there.
Because if you had to cut too much root out.
Yes, to fix the lifting problem.
Are you gonna be sawing copper nails anytime soon? Is that what you're saying?
This is strictly hypothetical.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's a valid point, though. I mean, if the tree root is causing the problem. There are some big.
The only way to fix it is to remove the root.
Yeah, there are some big areas.
The root cause, if you will.
Walk around, difficult for little dogs and Stephen go over the sidewalk pieces, so.
Yes, most of North William Street is like that, when I'm walking all the time. I see a lot of people walking in the street because of that.
Commissioner Hendrick, you had yours, like, with a lot of flags and stuff on it the last time I saw yours, was there anything else you wanted to go over on this?
Page three, it says the connections between the sidewalk and the streets. Now, I have one of those where it goes from the sidewalk out to the street, and the very end is sinking, and it's because the city's drain has taken the dirt away underneath. So what happens that, am I gonna have to continually fix it, or do I gotta get the city to fix the drain before I can fix my sidewalk? Because I don't wanna keep repairing.
I'm gonna have to give a DPW.
Because there's nothing wrong with the cement. It's sinking at the end because the dirt's going into the storm sewer. It's been like that for a long time. They tried to fix it, I think, once, but, you know, those type of issues is what's gonna come up, and I guess we'll have to do it.
Have it before Mike.
You know, the only other one, I had the same thing on four about, I'd remove Tetra Tech out of there because we don't know who we're gonna have. That was about all I had on the list. What else is there?
This proposed program has a lot of good things in it, but it sounds like there's just a few things we need to tweak out, just circumstances that we need to try to cover.
Yeah.
And that's what we should point out right now, so we can get those corrected and have a more acceptable document for the next meeting, so. Tetra Tech's gonna be removed as person in charge of the vid packaging, since we don't really know who's gonna do that yet.
I believe I've got them all.
We need clarification on who's responsible for where the sidewalk meets the street, and what was the other item?
The T.
Yeah, some type of description or a change in the designation of what the city's actually gonna be responsible for. Maybe we should just spell out what the city's gonna be responsible for, instead of that some strange T designation. And the other issue was how we were gonna fund this, and I, Commissioner Hendrick suggested that maybe we approach Tifa. Has there been any, have they been approached, or has this been floated by Tifa yet?
No, not yet.
So, that's something that maybe you should add to their agenda. And just so, just so everyone at home knows, we have to basically finance this program for the first 18 months, which could be quite expensive if we, you know, break the city into the areas that are outlining this program. So the suggestion was that maybe we ask Tifa to help almost finance that program with the understanding that a majority of that money would be returned to them, you know, once we've been reimbursed. So, of course, there's gonna be properties that we won't be reimbursed for, and other areas will be responsible for, so not all the money will be reimbursed after 18 months. Do you know if our treasurer looked into that at all, see if there was any particular rules or anything that would preclude us from doing that?
I don't know that, sir.
Another thing to add to your checklist.
Are we gonna stick with the four zones?
That was my question. Did we wanna put some provisions in that allow us to further decrease the size of those zones if we find one particular area that is a bit more cumbersome to deal with financially? Just to give us another tool, would you address that?
Well, I guess we could, I don't know exactly what the language is that's created those zones, I'd have to read it again.
Yeah.
But we could leave it flexible, where we would just, you know, announce prior year which areas we were going to address.
I think it just says conducted annually by zone.
Right, by zone, but they have four specific zones.
Yeah, define the zones as the.
Four could become eight or sixteen.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Especially the first time around when we're dealing with, you know, the long-term issues. As the program is streamlined, once we've, you know, hit all the zones once or twice, you know, certainly four zones are reasonable.
So, what you're suggesting is their language make the map flexible?
That's what I would say, that's my feeling.
I would check with the DPW, Mr. Ettrich, to be sure, because part of that consideration was the amount of cement to bring in at one time. Cost-wise, it's cheaper to bring in more than less, so.
Yeah, it'd have to be a big enough area to make it worthwhile.
Yeah, so perhaps that's one of the reasons, you know, I'm not privy to why they chose those four.
Well, you know, I think part of the reason is you don't want it to last, you know, for years and years and years before you get through the entire city.
Right.
Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, I got a question, maybe it'd be addressed to you, Mr. Downey. I'm concerned about the insurance reason. That's why we were pushing this. Now, you're saying that you wanna start it next year. Are we still in the timing span in keeping our current insurance, or is that gonna be raised?
That's a good question, I don't know the answer to. I think that if we're making progress on this, that we're gonna be okay. But I think as to the point that Commissioner Simpson and the mayor are making, I think that there is some urgency to get through the program once, but maybe a discussion with Mr. Saff on that issue might be fruitful before any definitive actions taken one way or the other.
I think John told us at one point that as long as we were moving to put this together, that, you know, they were gonna.
That's what I recall, it's because we didn't have a great program in place.
Yeah.
If we have one, that shows that we're looking at it and trying to mitigate that risk over time.
The other issue is, I went over this with Mary Ellen, our treasurer, and when this first came to light, we had had some multiple judgments all in one year. We had three judgments in one year, which created the need for us to actually go find a new insurance company. Since then, our loss ratio has been better, and our insurance ratio actually came down a little bit. So I think it's a little less urgent, but we need, at the time this program first came up, there was like some extreme urgency, and things have gotten a little quieter, so we might have some time.
Well, one other thing, too, is if we go through a section and there's a block that has no sidewalk, that's gonna be all done at the same time, not just fixing existing ones. If there's one missing, we're gonna be doing that at the same time?
I don't know.
There are quite a few areas on, in the area behind where I live, that there are no sidewalks.
There's a lot of areas, there's no sidewalks.
But the program doesn't address that, though, doesn't address creation of new?
I don't think it talks about creating new.
But I think John told us, I asked because like, for an example, down here in Delano, half of the blocks, the first block, it's on both sides. The second block, it's on one side, not on the other side. And when I asked about that, he said, "Well, if it's missing, technically, we should be putting it in." But the only thing I would stress is if you're gonna do that, then all the other areas where we don't have anything, like down West Boulevard and everywhere else, we'd have to put them in. We'd have to go in everywhere.
I mean, my opinion is I'd be content with addressing the sidewalks that exist that are in poor condition, that are actually creating a hazard. Does a sidewalk that doesn't exist create a hazard? I mean, I'm not being facetious. I mean, if it's an area where there are sidewalks everywhere else, and now you have this, you know, lots that don't have a sidewalk, and somebody, you know, trips because of a hole in the mud or something, I mean.
The liability, Your Honor, comes from. Yeah, I think that the language of the statute was recited, but they called it two-inch rule. If there's a fracture in the concrete to the extent of two inches, that's what triggers the municipal liability. And obviously, absent the sidewalk, you know, we don't have that consideration.
So basically, it's the negligence of maintaining the sidewalks that exposes us to risk, not the fact that there aren't any sidewalks there.
But even though we probably should've had one there, we're not gonna be forcing those in at this point, I guess. I'm just questioning.
The question's determined.
Yeah, I would.
To me, it might make sense if there's a continuous set of sidewalk, and there's maybe one plot of land that doesn't have it. To me, that makes sense, but if there's an entire street length.
Well, there are some like that.
Right, and that might be the exception to the rule, but if there's an entire street length, I think that those are two separate issues in my mind.
You know, I'd hate to put that, you know, somebody that's lived in that particular house all those years, and all of a sudden has the burden of adding that sidewalk. I think if we're gonna do that, maybe we need to come up with, you know, like maybe some type of assistance or help, or share some of that burden, maybe, I don't know.
And maybe would, maybe as we're doing the Trail Towns and Safe Routes to schools, that might play into that as well. There might be some funding available there, we might be lucky.
As long as we have an answer, because I'm sure that'll come up, you know.
Yeah, Commissioner Avery?
Just the last comment. I know the numbers were strictly picked, probably randomly, but Zone 3 and Zone 4 are probably the oldest sidewalks in the city, so when the random selection comes up, it might be wise to look closer at those areas.
I'm sure we'll be getting recommendations from our DPW director at that point, like where he'd like to.
Yeah, and once it's surveyed, they may find where the worst places are, and that would be the most likely thing to start with. Thank you.
So, we're looking for some guidance on, maybe talk it over with Mr. Ettrich, and I guess the rest of us need to think about it a little more, too, what we wanna do about missing sidewalks. It'd be nice if they weren't missing, but how come they've been missing all this time?
Well, that's kind of the issue.
Yeah. And how come, if it's required, they weren't ever required to do it?
Forced to put them in.
Yeah.
I don't know. Because like I said, one side has it, the other side doesn't.
I mean, is it possible that there was some kind of a grandfather provision that kept them from having to meet the requirements of having a sidewalk or something?
That may be. I can look into that. I don't know when our ordinance was adopted, nor frankly, when the state laws adopted.
Question to you, Mr. Downey, is there a legal situation where we might get into trouble that we, if there is a plot of land that sort of interrupts a continuous sidewalk, could that possibly be interpreted as not maintaining an entire sidewalk?
I guess anything's possible. I wouldn't be surprised if that were the case.
Okay.
But again, I think maybe on a case-by-case basis, if the general rule is we're not going to be putting down new sidewalk, maybe that's something in consultation with the DPW and our engineer, maybe it's something that we'd wanna consider, you know, on an ad hoc basis.
I like how the program really addresses automatic ZBA scheduling, if anyone asks for it. I think that's key to a lot of these unique situations, is that they would have a chance to go in front of the ZBA to get their chance to plead their case and resolve through them. And I think that's a key component that would address a lot of these special issues.
Yeah, I'm just picturing some, I don't know if it exists, but somebody on a corner lot with no sidewalks that all of a sudden has to put them in.
I know somebody that's got one.
Yeah.
And that's what they were worried about, is they're gonna have to put the whole thing in, because there isn't any.
Elizabeth and Maple.
Yeah.
Over on this, this way over here, too, there's some corners like that.
Well, I guess it'd be nice to have continuous sidewalks, if you're gonna have sidewalks anywhere, so I really think we need to figure out how we're gonna address that one, so.
Maybe that's a separate program or something.
Well, I don't know. We all need to sleep on that one and be ready to talk about it, I guess, when we get the rest of these answers done.
Good idea.
Do we have any other agenda to add on this? Anybody else? So you wanna move on?
So, bring it back next meeting?
We'll bring it back when the city manager has it, all those answers.
Okay.
If it's not the next meeting, you don't want it after that, I'm sure. Right, Mr. Tillery?
Correct.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9Z, which is a permit for, it's a discussion on the permit for 2025 South River Road, which we heard quite lively discussion on the last minute. What's going on with this?
Your Honor, Mr. Gitternalek, attorney from St. Clair Shores is present here tonight, and he represents the permit applicant, and I believe he's got some remarks that may be responsive to some of the concerns that were raised at the April 2nd meeting.
Good evening, Gary Gitternalek, on behalf of the property owners there.
Good evening.
I sent a letter to Mr. Downey and to Mr. McCarthy, and it basically outlines our position. We think the city properly issued the permit. It's allowed in that district. There's some discussion about, the zoning ordinance talks about fences in other areas, but that's where you have to have a site plan approval. You don't have to have a site plan approval for a single-family home, only if you're building a subdivision or doing lot splits. So, we outlined it, we gave you the documents. The client's basically owned to the water's edge, based on their deed, and based on Michigan Supreme Court decision, that wasn't in the thing from 1930. That basically says people that live along the Great Lakes or the tributaries, the St. Clair River, Lake St. Clair, own to the water's edge. There's been some discussion that people have the right to walk along the water's edge. You have the right to walk in the water or swim in the water. And like here, and you have the right to walk in the wet sand, but you don't have the right to walk in the dry sand. The ordinance allows for this type of fence. It's a chain link fence, doesn't really obscure anybody's view. The only obscuring part is the fence rail, which is about the size of this microphone base and the posts, so you can see through it. The only place you can't see through it is where the steel posts are in the rail. And the vegetation that was there before the fence was put up was more obstructive view than what's there now. And I live over in Chesterfield, New Baltimore area, I've lived there all my life. Every different community along the water has different rules and regulations as to fencing or obscuring items. By way of example, in New Baltimore, you can't have a fence or obscuring items in the first 30 feet, but beyond that, you can. Chesterfield has a different rule. I've had situations in Clay Township, they have a different rule. But tonight, I was in town a little bit early, and I came across seven places that have chain link cyclone fences. There's one at 108 Water Street, that's at the end of Water Street and Broadway by the park there. The Yellow House to the south has one. There's one at 256 Market Street. There's a similar fence at 270 Market Street, at the DNR Boat Launch, on the north side, next to the Stone Yard, and I've represented those people in the past. They, on the north side, they have a six-foot cyclone fence. On the south side, the Boat Launch, there's a four-foot. And I believe there's one a little bit farther south, but on the highway was stopped to get the address. So, they are in existence along the waterway in your community, and I get the address. So, they are in existence along the waterway in your community, and I think my clients are in compliance, and it's there. So, if you had any questions, I'd try to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? No, I think we were pretty well resolved, and we had made the right decision, so...
Yeah, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Downey, and he provided me his letter, and in the package, I referenced his letter.
All right. But thank you very much for that information.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to item 10A, which is a new ordinance, or is it a revision?
Your Honor, yeah, I'll take this. This is a revision of our ordinance on controlled substances. Essentially, as I think I outlined to the commission, we haven't amended that ordinance since the Medical Marijuana Act was enacted, and obviously, with the passage of that state law, there are situations in which a person can lawfully possess marijuana if they've got a card for it, a permit from their doctor. And our ordinance, again, which predates the MMA, does not have that accommodation, so this will simply bring us into compliance and update the ordinance.
Jim, is this a conversation you and I had about moving it from a misdemeanor to a ordinance infraction, or a similar fraction?
It's not, but that could be part of it as well.
Okay, that was one of the questions I had. Our current ordinance, it's a misdemeanor, $500 fine or up to $90?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay. So, what would this become?
This is all the same. The only thing we're adding is the language on the, it's lawful to possess it with permission, which we do not have at this point.
So, someone with a medical marijuana card, is that what we're...
That's correct. And it's not, there are some other exceptions, and that's referenced...
The existing ones are pretty lengthy. They're very detailed about different methods, if you will, of consuming drugs or whatever. Is this going to replace all that, or just into addition, add in the statement about medical marijuana?
Well, the language, Commissioner Turner, is this, it would say that it remains unlawful unless you are possessing it as defined by the state law.
Okay.
And that could be via a medical marijuana card, or there are people whose name eludes me now who may not be consumers of it, but are allowed to possess it, caregivers, on behalf of a certain number of, and they can have so many plants per patient that they have. So, those people as well would not be found in violation of the ordinance if they were, if they came into contact with the Marine City PD.
All right, so if they possess a medical marijuana card, then they're legal?
That's right.
But our ordinance is state probably 20 different ways, through different means of pipes and whatever, that you cannot consume this product, so...
And that remains the same, but if you can lawfully possess it...
Then you can throw out the rest.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Have they ever figured out if you can actually lawfully possess it if it's against federal law?
That's still being debated. Obviously, this is probably another discussion, a lengthier discussion, but Michigan is one of, I think, three states that has, you know, made it lawful to possess it under certain circumstances, but it's unlawful to purchase it anywhere. So, there's a constitutional question that's raised, you know, if your 90-year-old grandmother is given a medical marijuana prescription for her glaucoma, how does she fill that prescription? If your 18-year-old nephew who's at college gets a similar prescription, he can run across the quad and have his prescription filled in five minutes. So, there's a bit of an equal protection issue to be made there, that I think our state government is still trying to wrestle with.
Commissioner Lovett?
No, I was just...
Anybody else?
No comment.
We, I had brought one other thing, that's a little bit off-subject, but I noticed some communities are doing other things to address grow rooms or grow houses and things like that, and I think our only option to control that is through zone, am I correct?
Yes, there's actually a law that is stuck in the Senate at this time, or a bill, I should say, that's stuck in the Senate, that would answer a lot of those questions, Your Honor. Right now, the response to those types of issues would be through a pretty onerous zoning process, but if this law were enacted, essentially, communities could simply opt in or opt out to allow these establishments or not. And if you opt out, there's no need to go through that rather onerous zoning piece. If you opt in, then it follows that you're going to have to figure out a way to zone it. I'm facing that issue in another community I represent, where essentially, they've just forestalled the debate as they wait for the state to make some sort of a pronouncement on this, because they don't want to endure the cost and expense of going through the zoning process if they can simply do an up or down vote on whether they want this in the first place. I mean, that's sort of the, I guess, the threshold question that any community would like to be able to answer. But although it's passed through the House, the Senate has not taken it up. And I've been in contact with Senator Pavlo's office, and there was some discussion that they might take it up in the lame duck session before the end of the year, and then they did not. And now that we're into the new year, I don't know where that falls in the list of priorities that they have.
So, other than this ordinance that you're reducing tonight, is there anything else that we should be...
I think that we're...
Is that interim type?
I think for the time being, Your Honor, we're in good shape there. We haven't had the issue arise.
Yeah, but it's going to happen.
It's going to happen, and I think maybe, you know, we just keep our fingers crossed the state gives us some guidance in the meantime.
All right.
So, in summary, this is just to, I would say, decriminalize or legalize. If you have medical marijuana permission, let's say, to possess for medical purposes...
Right now, there is not that exception.
This makes it legal.
That's right.
Okay.
Because right now, the way it stands, one of our officers would probably have to arrest somebody for this paraphernalia, if they were possessing a medical marijuana card or something.
Well, they would not, but they would not, but this, they would simply be doing that on their own discretion, but it should be built into our ordinance to reflect what the state law is.
That's what it can seem to, in my mind, it's a gray area between, is it a criminal situation, or is it legal? You know, it's a question of, is this, is it legal to possess, or is it just decriminalizing?
Well, there are a lot of scenarios I could give you that are really thorny. You know, if you were the driver of a motor vehicle and have a medical marijuana card, but your backseat passenger has the marijuana on his or her lap, are you possessing it there, or does the backseat passenger that doesn't have a medical marijuana card? And does the police officer, is she obligated to seize that? Is contraband, or, you know, so there's...
Kind of like Detroit City Council.
And how come so many young people have like homeland anymore, it's like, you know? And how do they do that?
I would move to introduce item 03 of 2015, in regards to narcotics and narcotic paraphernalia.
Support.
So, a motion of support. Any other discussions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, has been introduced. Moving on to 11A, which is dispersments, including payroll.
Make a motion to approve dispersments, including payroll, of $254,132.89, including the former city manager payout.
Support.
A motion of support. Is there any discussion on that? Any questions on spending? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellie?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Scott Tarver?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
You board? Moving on to 11B, which is preliminary financial statements.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary financial statements.
Support.
Motion of support. Any discussion or question on the financial statements? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to our acting city manager's report.
Since last meeting, I attended the meeting of the planning commission. I met with Dan Casey from the St. Clair County EDA in the office in the city hall. Many of you have been in there and witnessed the dysfunctional arrangement of the offices. And in the office, we met with an efficiency expert regarding the layout of the city offices, and some changes will be happening. We're going to move things around to make things a little more ergonomical and make things work better in the offices. Had a teleconference with Joyce Parker of the MML. The CM job is posted and can be found on the website. I have the addresses if anybody's interested in them. Both the job posting and the brochure, I printed out a copied brochure and brought a copy up here, if any of you guys want to check it out after the meeting. Currently, we have eight applications, the MML, with the MML. The budget process is on track and on time, and just want to remind everyone that I will be on vacation during the next commission meeting.
How much does the efficiency expert cost?
Nothing.
Nothing? He just came in?
Just came in and helped us.
Okay, great. It's good to hear.
Somebody saw him do?
Pardon, sir?
Some friend of someone's?
Yes, yes, actually, was the father-in-law of our IT people.
Good praise.
So, yes.
Great, and wow.
Very helpful.
I had sent, did you get that email from me with that gentleman's card?
Yes.
Because prior discussion, that's their business, and he said he'd be more willing to come down here and take a look at what you have, so...
Yes, we just haven't had a chance to get to it yet.
Why? Been busy?
A little bit.
Is there anything else? Okay, Mr. Simpson, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
Just want to remind everyone that might be listening or in the audience, that the Marine City Scholarship Foundation is having their 30th annual dinner, which is on Monday, May 4, at 6:30 PM. Dinner will be served at 7. That would be at the Marine City Middle School cafeteria, and Marge Gunther, the recording secretary, sent me with invitations to all the current folks up here. It's open to all the public, and all the funds go to scholarships within the city of Marine City. Last year, they gave away $18,000 in scholarships, and since 1986, they've given away $538,000 total in scholarships. And all that's right with inside Marine City, whether it be private school, Cardinal Mooney, or the East China School District. So, it's a group that works hard in our city. So, again, that's Monday, May 4, starting at 6:30 PM, and it's open to anyone who wishes to attend. And also, the St. Clair County, the new Blue Water Convention Center is having an open house that would be this Saturday. It's open to the general public from 11 till 2. They have self-guided tours. I plan on going. It's one of those things where if you don't take advantage of the tours at the beginning, it's all private events perhaps, so just if anyone's interested in seeing what their county dollars went to spend, and, you know, what offerings we now have up by the bridge. So much of that's changed over the last few years, it might just be a neat offering. I haven't seen a lot published on it, so I just wanted to mention that for everybody.
Commissioner Avery?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hatter?
Couple things. Somebody asked me if we could start getting the dog waste bags in those things in the parks, there's some...
Is there receptive for waste bags there?
Well, there's a thing to put the little bags so they can use them.
Someone just came in and asked Mike Gettrich if he happened to be there, and he said they're all filled.
Oh, maybe he just did it.
They don't want to put it anywhere near the lighthouse area, because the kids that hang out there take them and throw them.
Yeah, I think somebody just told me that when they looked the last time, there wasn't anything in them. So, as long as they're full, that's great.
Well, I see them full one day, and then empty the next.
Right, that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and wasn't the Rotary Club maintaining those, fourth floor?
Yeah, I spoke to Liz Zarauski, I don't remember mentioning to her.
Well, yeah, I have a feeling they're now all getting used for, you know, doggy duty, like they should be.
The one thing, the sirens, we're still having trouble with the sirens now. I know Mike told me that he had somebody come in to do some programming, because they're not going off when the county's toning. Now, this weekend, the fire chief was able to get one guy to come out and look at the one in 300 Broadway. What they found with that one is a wire got cut somehow to that siren, so it was off, so they fixed that, but we don't know if they're going to work when they set the tone off. So, being that we're starting tornado season, we're trying to get them repaired.
We're waiting on them to send another signal to see if they both work, and if not, we'll move on from there.
Yeah, great, okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. And did you ever check on, I haven't been over on Degurcy, did you check on those speed limit signs? Anybody see them?
I talked to Mike Gettrich about that. I did not hear back from him. He just said he would handle it.
Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Lovett?
Just a couple of things. Wanted to thank the acting city manager and staff for the great job that they're doing, continuing to move our city forward in this transition time. And walking around the city, putting out brochures for a bassoon concert, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the date, May 4, I think?
12.
Pardon?
12.
12, May 12. Bassoon Quartet will be at the Riverbank, sponsored by the Marine City Music Festival. If you are interested, I would suggest get your tickets early, get them now, because I think they are going fast. But it was just nice to see so many businesses that are spruced up. Some have, you know, done repairs to the outside, making a painting, things are looking really nice. Have a few new businesses moving into town, new fire, new fire, excuse me, flower business moving into one of the older buildings down by the Holy Cross Church area. So, it's great to see that. And also to thank the DPW and the Police Department and the other departments in our city that have been doing such a great job. And especially, you know, we've been talking about the Fire Department so much, but again, our appreciation to the Fire Authority for, you know, saving the city lots of money in the process, and our gratefulness that they are there to serve us. Thank you.
Another one.
Relative to our budget workshop that we just finished up on, is there a chance that we can see a, like a summary outline of all the things that went into our decisions? In other words, just something that kind of points out some of the major decisions that we made, the reasons, the benefits for those decisions?
Yes, I'm also working on an information piece for the meeting.
Prior to our public hearing, Your Honor?
Yes.
Thanks. That's it.
Commissioner Mellie?
Okay.
The budget public hearing is next meeting, or when is it?
May 21st.
May 21st.
The 21st, yep.
So, May 21st, the public hearing for the budget, I would recommend you attend. You can hear a little bit more about the reasoning and what went into that budget. Other than that, I don't really have anything much to say, so I'm going to let it go at that. We're about to go into executive session. Going to have to ask everyone to leave. You will be welcome to return at the end of executive session. We'll check to see if anyone's out there. We may or may not conduct any business at the end of executive session, so at this point, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved?
Support.
I make a motion to go into executive session, sorry.
Okay, so I believe we have motion of support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellie?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Scott Tarver?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right, we are now going into executive session. Thank you for coming.